Going by. Notice meeting with some. They don't know any of. All proceedings for after will be taken. This case is being. Being in accordance with the open news. Copy of the open news. Those news copies are kept. Any person wishing to address. Will be shown by state. Recognize. There's those podiums. They sign and sign and see opening on podium. In the organization. Thank you. Well called.
Block.
Here.
Dupierre.
Here.
Holstein.
Here.
Kraske.
Yeah.
Lafflin.
Here. Alright, uh, you said data, you had the all the banks required. obligationary membership. To our house to you. Uh, also for general nurse. And for planning. Do you wait off? The mother. Blackman. Right. Block. The principal is anyway. There's no. Just input down. You vote.
Five, yes.
Motion carrying. Uh, under public hearing, we have planning and zoning. This is a request, the reason. Describe as track. In lots. Northeast order southwest. Order lot upwards. Located in special. Northways, westings. Two town in Nebraska. This is personal ID. Zero eight five zero zero one three. Proposed in result point is um, C four business district. Anyway. Our free residential district. Identity. On sound that really. Uh, looking at this. Yeah. Seven oh two. Thirty three one seven four. Come on. Off. Where? It is something. Not very much to see, but. I'm not seeing three of them. Our first, our third. Um, hard way to answer. So the lots, I would say. And. That was. That's why it's there. I want you to work through the whole. Only narrow. I would. There is a block land. It's probably the building up. With the block. And maybe since when. Definitely. They're hungry. Since they may do that. Out one. Hang for that. Hang them. It's fire. On the right. Fire. Thousand. Name. You will. The thirty one. Yeah. We are. Hope that's you. What? Bring. That's true. Water. They don't move from school. There's, there's three brands. And you can go. Baby bottom number. Of. One, one, three of them. So it's no residence. No. Okay. That way that we're looking at. Let me get it. Are you, um, first of all, I have to go receive. Take the photo. Uh, please. One room, one room. If you were to guess. Then you are you going to have. It's somewhere in the government. Um. A lot of them. Three years. The that they could maybe pass an experience. And there's a map of. If there's one up running. And I've done. Done to have a. It is. Then you put. Are you? I'm not expert in this, but just what I said, pray said, remember. And they come back and say, you got a major question for him, say. Yeah, I still think it's. Still think it's worth it. I've. I said from that and by now, I don't see a thing to here back near. Who the? Or any. Uh. Yeah. And so that's what it looks like. Elevating. Thirty two oh nine, thirty ten base floor elevation. And just from thirty two twelve to thirty two fourteen. Yeah. Four or six. We look at your. Um. And yeah. Definitely. If it comes, if it weren't for that. Stories, I mean, in the project. Uh, no. It's like fifty nine dollars per. Still on. Yeah. I see it. Well, the hardly getting. Like the. I send it. But I would. Because I would say, you know, there's also, there's two houses that are going. And you didn't buy the. Yeah. Isn't. They are looking at. You have to raise that. That would really. When it. There's a door. That runs. Let me try to remember. The nice thing is my friend, I talked to moving some of the hurt, he's been back. Two home. Moving home there. That's gonna lead to some of that. But long. The longer time. I miss them. As high. But I'd get that one. If you could do a cross section. Do. Yeah. Four foot tall. That would let's just water flow through it. Where your floor would. Open your butt down. And you're. Kind of. Way off the ground like, like mobile home is. Yeah. But this will play. Back though. Based on those. By. So. It didn't sound. More than others, but. Sounds like we're not blowing them as we came down. Along. You know. You have to have. Maybe around something in the. Issue. Is that. That's sound.
Yeah, some of, some of the water was coming like even like. South of like Walmart. And that was all coming over to that area. Real project. It, it like, it all came from both directions and hit about there.
But you. Oh, yeah, it was. Where. Did you? Would this still? Going. You know, code. Yeah. Which could get, could get expected. Like a lot. Simple question is just. No, I don't. He deserves. He says seven seventy. Then we think that. So let's go next. Uh, why we say in his own collection. Since he does build them. Don't, don't know. Yeah. He didn't have. We done. But. Twenty five. Okay. Any other comments? Or questions? Alright, uh, thank. Well, this is the next. Uh. You know, in public forum. About. Forum on. The items not on. Not. Uh, we want to support and support treasure and minutes. Hell, it's term twenty third, twenty. And we do feel free to minutes of the range. Over the tenth of twenty third, twenty twenty five. You have my most my consent. There and second by council. Pretty good. Mark totally discussing. His work.
Yes, one abstained.
Motion carrying. Uh, then we have the minutes of the weather. Now immediately following the public hearing on the progress. September twenty third, twenty five. I'm moving up. Following the public hearing. For the president. September forty three. Second. We have a motion by council. Second by council. Pretty minutes, uh, definitely. Sometimes. Third one. There's no discussion. Wants to be vote.
Or yes, one abstained.
Motion carrying, uh, new financial report. Twenty twenty five.
Okay, for the month ended. September thirtieth, twenty twenty five, the revenues were one million eight hundred forty thousand nine hundred seventy one dollars and eighty seven cents. Expenses for the month. Were one million seven hundred ninety seven thousand nine hundred seventy six dollars and ninety two cents. Fiscal year to date revenues were thirteen million six hundred seventy eight thousand five hundred twenty dollars and fourteen cents. And fiscal year to date expenses were thirteen million six hundred sixty one thousand six thirty six and twenty five cents. Uh, we had, do have our fiscal. Year completed at the end of September. Um, and the proprietary funds had seventy nine percent of their budget revenue remaining, the governmental funds had ten percent. And the internal service funds. Had eleven percent of their budget revenue remaining. And then on the expense side, the proprietary funds have eighty percent of their budget expenses remaining, the governmental funds have twenty one percent. And the internal service funds are over the budget de balance by thirty one percent. Fiscal year to date, the city has received nine hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars and ninety one cents from franchise fees. Thirty eight thousand six hundred seventy seven dollars and fifteen cents from telephone occupation taxes. And one hundred sixty seven thousand eight hundred six dollars and seventeen cents from hotel occupation taxes. And then on our, um, LB eight forty, the unencumbered balance is a negative two hundred fifty six thousand nine hundred sixty three dollars and fifty seven cents. Year is completed and we, we have the auditors coming next week.
Hey.
Yep.
And. You know. You see. Brand. One. And we don't. Have revenue. That. That we don't.
Yeah.
But. Some way. I would. Use the. Two million. That's more. You know, ninety percent. Resident. Is there any way? So report. That would. Set them up.
Well, of course there would be. When are you off the? No, I'm sorry. No, that, that, I mean, no, that could be done.
I mean, what? Don't call it.
Yep.
Are you?
Do you wanna see more just the straight revenue? It's false.
I'd be hopeful. See like our. Our capital. That's something. On their own. So you know. You aren't doing it. Just gonna see.
Okay.
You know what? You know what?
I do.
But. You know, you know, I mean. Those are things enough. Those are. No.
Nope. It, it's down a bit, um. There's a, there's a hotel we're working with and they're supposed to be giving the money to us. Uh. Um. Uh, Kevin, I don't.
That's one thing. The dumb one.
Hey. And yeah. It will, yeah. You can look at the franchise. Well, there is a little different because it's collected. Ours is ba, I mean, we. I mean, it's, it doesn't go through the state, so it's, I guess, for. Lack of a better word, it takes a little less precedence or more priority with some of the people that owe us these taxes and sometimes we have to really go after it to get it. And a lot of the hotel owners. Are not as fluent in English. As would be. Preferred. I'll just say that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the first. They. Sent to. Another one in the legal.
Yep.
Alright, well, you know. It's a lab for the. This comes in the first season. And you know, you see it probably. Uh, the idea was. You know. From a front end, it's against. Deficits that, uh. I don't know. The, the building department, the market. Um. Those deficits were pointed, understanding. Engineers, solutions. I am intended to be helpful. I think it's only reached out to an engineer to come up with all that. Like a many public players in the air. The, um. Understanding and talking to the engineer. As he was doing. The engineer, the Dickinson, we'd be building. The projects. I mean, their invoices received by the city. The, the city is that to the one who made contact with Dickinson to do this work. And so that's why this invoice is in, in terms of you. And we wanted the invoices, uh. Project. Made their own payments already. It's just, they look at that invoice. There's two projects on it. One for the. I made their own. Pay money raised Mr. Dickinson. One is just doing that, that. But that's, that's why it's the forty. Here to. What's, uh. Project. On down the block. The work is going on. Or we. I was in the office when Brandon was on the phone there. Um. When, when the. For all of this was going. They were, they were aware, they just, they spent on. Brandon, we might be able to speak to the timeline. As to. It's the when this all came out. And I looked at it. We were trying to. Scrambling, we were scrambling to try to help keep things moving. Which is why. We learned a lesson. Let me, let me answer this, Brandon. We, we paid. They're asking city to pay for this work project. Your value project go to the owner and property, if they need that work project to correct the. Then we own the work project. I think for money. That was sent, being there with the bulk of his money in the same. Yes. If they would have. You know, if, if the homeowner, whoever it were, would have, would have hired his own engineer. Came up with a different work product. Would be stopped. Like. Uh, if they use our work product, um, it's the same thing. You're right. That. Any other comment? Question we use? The comments don't make the. Nation. Good point. Then he stopped. Well, knowing that it would. That was a lot of city, but the truth. Thank you. There's no reason. Not. He thinks. Probably. Forty dollars. Hmm. Who? Does he? Find? Someone else? And I think that's the problem. Uh, yeah, I'm totally great. I mean, I, I've been promising, but. I think the meaning around it is owner because they need the work that. That we paid for. I have no problem with. What, what else? Well. Nothing here. Third basically is, is a. Yeah. It. Which we ordered it. We should put. But. That was all. I was saying. Something. I'm sorry. I would. I'm not making sure. Especially. What one of them. Absolutely. Well, you know, shame on us for doing that once. It won't happen again. So. That's unfortunate for all. I'm not gonna say. No, no. The man. Ben. Don't. Okay. Yeah. It's been stoned. Down. There it is. There it is. Are you? How we're going. That was definitely. Maybe to give. Correct. I know. That's just showing the wisdom. That's just. Yeah. You didn't do, makes a pain up to twenty one, go week warrior drive. Forcing to consider women, third day. In voice, I mean, um. One thousand one hundred and thirty six seven dollars and fifty six at the next regular. So. We have. By. Here. What's my apple? It was down. One. All. It's, it's not.
It left it.
Maybe there were, there were two people. Also, um, eleven hundred and sixty seven. Right. Now we're. One, one, one has been made. Paid by the property owner. The other one was in. The one on. So we're. We're gonna pay. We'll pay you. Alright, we have motion back. That's the result.
Five, yes.
Yes. You know that. Go ahead and work with Google. Put some change. So. That. Extra money. But I do have. Property. Doesn't. If, you know. Not done. Well, what if? What if we have stop orders out there? We're hiring new engineers. It's everybody's problem. And. We shouldn't be. We should be doing it. Yeah. Yeah, we should be doing it. Right. But those people. They, again, I. I remember. What? They're gonna take that. But. In that same tax, the property owner included, we got some. Us. And. If. And he never gets. If. Well. They wouldn't have said no. They could have said no, no, thank you. I'll hire money. Well, they knew. They, they knew that there was a stop order that made them think you were told. Yes. Well, that could be a victim say. And there's, there's a. Very fast. But we don't have. We'll have to look in. The issue before you is just. Yeah. Yeah. I mean. I think we have someone else there. Target plan for. Two of them. I received a phone call. Question. Hello. Or maybe from that. My wife and I were never notified. Of an inspection that was going to take place on my property. Believe me. If I was there. None of this. And you guys would not be making. Quite frankly, I would have been taking care. Every other project that I have ever built. I've ever built on. Here. Or we done. The city has never taken on a project still. To do an inspection. Not as of the property. Or the general contractor of. Whatever project's going on. If you guys would like to take on that responsibility. Then this is what you're gonna have. And if we were not notified. I have a paper sitting right over there from the email. I believe it was. September fifteenth. You think I was notified? September seventeenth. There's one of my wife and I. She's hanging out. But we ran stuff. Again, an inspection. June thirty. That's ten weeks. Ten weeks. Not knowing what was going on. But I don't have a problem with the process. And if you think I was notified, you're mistaken. That also. Brings to a head on a previous meeting that I had. With you, Mr. Watkins. Hmm. And the cold shoulder we got when we were in the meeting. Not knowing. This happened. Which we did with that. Is that in regard to the? It had nothing to do with it. I was concerned on the cold. I understand everything now. But. My wife and I. Fucking real upset. As to. This going on. And as far as you think that we're using your information to fix anything? No. I thought I had another engineer to take care of it. Glad to hear that. Uh. We don't, we don't have an issue. Well. Uh, your co-founder is the one that did. Yeah, uh, that's our, that's our bad. You know. Brad would try to be helpful. I think we learned the rest. Well. I, like everything. I have a good relationship with Brad. I got no problem with being helped off that stretch. Uh, professional courtesy. And me a back fit, uh, my wife and I would appreciate a phone call. When something like this is going to happen or. Being that needed to happen. A phone call to the property owner. I would think would probably be a phone call. Not a surprise. Visit. Um. Not to mention, there was a third party involved on this. That I don't know if you are aware of. I'm not sure whether he works for the city. But I. Or has been working for the city. Um. But that's the reason. We're in the position we're in. So. On my own, very modest. What was it for the? The doctor? Was. I, we had no idea this. The fake is white. Who reconcile? It's something. And. Um. Was it? Bring them. A text from John Fulkland and Dickinson answered. Have to be a total invoice amount for. Twenty-one away warrior drive, an amount of eleven sixty-seven and fifty cents. Is for a structural analysis report from Franky issues back in July. There are a couple ways we can proceed to handle this thing. You can directly take care of the invoice. Dickinson, man, for ready. The overall planning is the main department is sending the work to the state to be paid on the department's budget. If this is the option chosen. I want to advise you that it will be broadcasted publicly and posted on YouTube considering all health and heart health as on YouTube. Also, if this is the option chosen after telling the same amount of people. The city will then invoice you. For the amount. Please let me know if you want to dispute. So any directly to Dickinson, contact. Zero eight three four. Eight four forty. The handle through the city council. Zero eight three eight four. Six zero zero one. To place on the council. My understanding for a lean may be placed. The. By the time it's placed. City Council, General City. Is contact government, which we assume. Best this for. Darby, can we get a call for that? Since we read it into the weather.
Let's see. Yeah.
Darby, can we get a call for that? Since we read it into the weather.
Let's see. Yeah. Doesn't matter. If you did it. It's not. It's my house. It's on. Now we have.
Which. We, we didn't, we didn't pay for it.
Yeah. I'm just saying.
Sounds like we don't have all the facts on this. You feel. All like you were. But. We're not doing that.
No. No. The next, the. The one that's happened after that one. And it was the same, Darby. They wanted to stop working with you. And he. Yard is owned by engineer. And fix the problem, so.
That's.
It's a little difficult.
Same, same in up there. For same part.
And burn.
Yes. I.
I have.
Biggest problem, my wife. There should not be a third party. Contractor. Basically. The man. Doing it and running it through everybody else. There is the reason Brandon Scott has a picture. He doesn't figure. If we have another party out there that's doing. Acting, the process layout, everything else. There's a lot of. What's a third party? Who, who's the third party?
I think.
We had. Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know. Part of this. So I mean, we're armed now, so. At the request of Brian Scott, the inspector of the city of Delaware, conducted a structural inspection on the. Ninety AM. Twenty-one make warrior drive of Oklahoma Nebraska. Project first is. Partially completed. Single story of the mental structure. With a basement apart. And I would be low grade. That's drawn the inspection purpose for drag wall. Or lost lately. Present during the inspection, when we still. Brian Scott was Zep here. Is that Peterson's, that third party thing you talked about? Okay. That's. I wasn't. Whatever. Turn. More to be. Bring it back this. Great. What we're gonna do. Pretty thanks for doing so. You.
Right.
Yeah, and say this part of it. Never you ran. We'll get Jane out. Don't need to. Yeah, I wrote on this text. Little port on the. You. We need to start. Okay. Hey, sorry, Darby. Yeah. Uh. Recommendations, departments, boards and committees, uh, under administration. We have an open contract with Mark Skinner. Tech mode. But this is, uh. To get, to get some assistance to. Go without the three sixty-five. Um. Mark Skinner has been working on technical matters for office services. He's no longer employed as office services. He's familiar with our. He's familiar with smarter than you. But Mark was the one to help migrate. Our archives and get the last three sixty-five up and going. This was just. Because of. This will be something of a normal, just the city manager's decision. Nature of the relationship with the contractor. This needs to be brought to the council for that. That is. Well, we have, we just want to get back to the license. Start working. Between the planning and zoning software, this. The bus software and the web, website. We will, we will lock it. We've talked about, um. The need for, I think there is a platform upgrade, is there not, Dan? Coming with, with Microsoft is. Like, is part of this.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Isn't there, um, something going on with date? I assume.
Oh, Windows, that's just that update, yeah.
This, this is one minute.
Well, that's just, that's just the whole, either. An update, I hear.
Question we can. It makes more sense to have one. Of everything or subcontract out little pieces. Cause everybody likes to do IT. Things differently or use different programs, et cetera. But we surely don't want to try and put this together as a big bubble for everything that we need for upgrades and for that. Or a P.
Like, it's sort of think awesome is timing. I'd like to get this thrown in as quick as possible. And this should be some, some, it should be some. Still, some. Are there people in town? Or how far away do you have to go?
I think. You know, hard decisions, you know. If there's probably your own nonsense down there, a few hours. Just like I said, throw it out and break it down. You guys does one thing. Instead of. The world.
Yeah, at some point. We're gonna be at a point where we may have to have a full-time IT person. So. I know we. Even back in the day, we would not through you.
It's just something. Are we getting to the five points if we're gonna build a new house in my server, the store?
Oh, we already have that. I mean, we have a, we have a server that we, a shared data server that we use. And Mark's been the one engineering it all.
I, you know, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah.
But. Now I'll have my system. Is that a motion? I will. We have a motion by Councilor Lappin. Block. The, uh. Knowledge conflict. With the contract. Or experience. There's no further discussion, the council please vote.
I guess.
Motion carriers. You're in your community development, and it's all being at your local cooperation. And with being the overall public. This president, this is a step in setting the stage to re. Create. Asset sales tax for infrastructure development initiative later. Uh. Next year. This is an interlocal with the community development forum. Uh. It's part, it's part of the. The legislation, we have to have an independent body, um. For an interlocal. Parting the infrastructure back. This, uh. CRE, I think. I can't remember, I have a recent Monday to develop their portion. This is, this is all our portion. We'll need to redo it. We can't carry it over. So when we get ready to move forward with the infrastructure tax, we'll have to have a new. Yeah. And the CRAs probably are. Are. Voice for. And thi- 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 this is, this is the same. The same thing we went through in two thousand and sixteen, the same thing in two thousand and twenty-four, and the same thing we will go through in twenty. Hopefully twenty twenty. Yeah. Uh. Most by Councilor Lappin. Councilor Wolfstein. The all meaningful creation act. Three, they'll go public infrastructure agency. No further discussion, the council please vote.
I guess.
Motion carrying. All right, moving on to your planning and zoning. We will close the public hearing at, uh, seven forty. And this is the request to resign the property described as fat. In lots. Northeast, border southwest. So giving six to eight, that's the. Thirteen north, range thirty-eight west, and the six PM. He's counting the grass. So ID. Zero eight five zero zero one three zero zero proposed rezoning is from simple business district. State highway, all three residential. Identity. I will. We have a motion by Councilor Lantyne. Uh. City of Council and block. Here's the ordinance. And we. There's no. Any discussion, the council.
I guess.
Motion carries. In ordinance, the regional property described in a strat. In lots, northeast, order southwest. Outlaws located in section eight. Downship thirteen north, range thirty-eight west, and six. EM. He's counting red. First ID zero eight five zero zero one two zero zero. Rezoning from C four business district, where it's a highway to R three residential district identity. Movement. I think. Most of. By top. My. Without four minutes fourteen seven. There's no further discussion, the council please vote.
I guess.
Running for two seven seven. All right, uh, moving on to the street, wanting to bring it. Personal services for construction in year. East second street. C. West. Second. This birth, this is, uh, constructed, but I need to start Thursday, we found that it's late. We're gonna start turning up the street around here here in the morning. Uh. And this, this, this. Be in the outside of the. Right, I took one. Yeah.
And it's.
Fire department will be exiting through the east. Off of the arc. Um. Ladder check is still on the shop, so we won't worry about anything. We're hoping to get this all, but. But I mean, mid, mid, late, mid. We quit.
Under the prison, since you have a special. Or personal for construction anymore. There, there, there. Use student, use school, use group. And West rocket street, West, it's two three. Now, the council president will decide whether. So again. And most. Then by councilor Holstein, I'll cite him, I'll count the layer. The. National service agreement where twenty shaft. Does it speak? There's no further discussion. Council please vote.
Five, yes.
Motion carrying. Right, moving on to the first attorney.
He's on some.
Tell him how you're at that.
We're the city manager. Don't know where I'm getting this up here for. He just went out Thursday. Whatever, whatever part, let's do. Tell me if you're trying. Can't find the elements of. Antique. It's, it's, it's. They may be rough.
Do, uh, do we have the oil though? Is that thing?
We had viewed the tank that was evaporating for the clear of the gallon.
So, I mean, we have to do anything. In there?
Bike, bike test. Some. Wait.
Yeah. And, and this, this is. It's not death tolls, it's not.
Yes, the. The death, the deadly worse.
Okay. I know that you have to stir it, but. I mean, I mean. Yeah, but I mean, I, I guess it's. It's an alley business. Yeah. I mean.
I'm taking my own.
Come back, please. Uh, we have no schedule of course by the. Same councils that just have anything we would like to offer. All right. After. Keep the sound.
Rumor happening. So, I'm just gonna do it here. Talking all. All about. Last couple. I wanna be going back. Make sure that we're covering the land.
Yep.
Land by.
Yeah, I'm. But for their business, the council, I've entered a motion for your.
Move to the journey.
You can do it, thank. We have a motion.
Got one. That's the duty here is your.
No discussion at all, please vote. Motion carries for adjourned. Thank you, everyone.